... pedestrian walkway. I think that's a crucial thing to the whole development of this. And as I started to say about the drive-through, I was hoping that maybe that would be a part of a condition that maybe we could minimize the amount of drive-through that we would have, if that would be a part of a condition. I don't know whether it could be or not. But as far as the two cars being less, I'm not sure as the expert, I guess I would call you an expert from Tim Hortons, that based on your experience of all the other Tim Hortons that you've had is not going to be an effective situation. We have a lot of office buildings that we have all over, that we have all kinds of parking, that we have projected, honestly, in bed. And also, the other item though really is the walkability and the character that we're trying to create with the node, and that to me was very important. And I think the main thing is bringing the Tim Hortons as close as possible to the streets, both on Dequender as well as the Long Lake. And, you know, to me, that's an important issue. That develops that character along with, of course, the patio, which I think should be increased in size if we can. The other thing I really would, and I haven't looked at it that carefully, but I would like to see a masonry wall as well as additional landscaping as a buffer between the two adjacent property owners. A masonry wall would be very important. In addition to, I'm referring to it because I do think that landscaping, the buffer of landscaping is real critical. I think that the landscaping also should be heavy, very heavily landscaped between the parking area and the street itself. I think that that's a big area there. I'd like to really hide all the cars that are there and emphasize the building being on the intersection there. But those are my comments as far as where I'm coming from. I feel that we have to compromise and certainly I feel I'm leaning towards supporting this. Thank you, Mr.
Chairman.
Mr. Shifky?
Yes, I like the layout. I like the patio also. I like the walkability. I've never lived by a drive-through. I do know I go to Taco Bell over on Rochester Road that has several residents abutting to the back of the property. And I know they're open late at night. They're not a 24-hour operation. And I don't know how disruptive it is. I have not talked to the residents, but they seem to be coexisting. It's really unfortunate in a way that when there's adjacent vacant land to our property, that we don't know what the future of that's going to be. I don't think this is going to impact the neighborhoods as much as some of the residents might think that it has a negative potential. And that's just my best guess, like a lot of the commissioners up here. I think it's a good fit for the area. There's a party store across the street. There's the 7-Eleven kitty corner. There's a lot of things that would make this a very walkable with a small shopping center next to the party store. I think this could be a nice walkable site if we could fit this in here and make compromises. I do believe the barrier wall has to be a masonry wall, something that's going to keep the decibels of sound down. One question I do have is I'd like to find out approximately what the estimated decibels of noise from, because I'm not familiar with a 24-hour drive-through situation, I'd like to find out some kind of information on how much noise, the noise factor is going to be here. The Tim Hortons that I've gone through in late hours, there have not been a lot of cars in them. They do have a flow, but it's a very sparse one, so I can't see that being a big problem. Again, it's a guess on my part. I'm in favor of supporting this.
Thank you. Mr. Sanzika?
You know, Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, we had a study session on this back in May, and all these issues came up at that time. The hours of operation, the buffer between the subject property and the property of the west, potential for connection to the property of the north, the location of the speaker box, the size and location of the dumpster. You know, those are all the issues we discussed. And I'm really disappointed that you really didn't address those issues. Here we come today, taking the time of all the residents to, you know, to impact their life. And, you know, I can understand why they're concerned. You know, they have a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week drive-through window that, as I understand, you know, and I understand that the developer and the property owner is trying to utilize their property. I understand that. But I think what they're asking for is like all the, like some of the other members have said, they're trying to put so much on this property that really doesn't belong there. And I just, quite honestly, the part of my heart, I just can't support this drive-through operation.
Thank you. Do you have something to say? Kempin?
Yeah.
Kempin?
Yeah, this is kind of a challenging situation here. I'm kind of conflicted on this whole development, listening to all the different ideas, all the citizens' concerns. I know I do like that area as far as the residential area on Briarwood. I looked at moving there myself right up until I tried to drive out onto Dequender. It's a challenge. In fact, that might be something we might want to look at ourselves. But I don't think that that would be made any worse by having this development on that corner. You know, we've looked at other similar sorts of things, and it's not a big impact as far as adjacent drives, because the distance is sufficient that it wouldn't impede there. So I don't think that's a good point to bring up. The neighborhood node zoning district itself, I've often questioned how some of these were put together in the past. And I looked at the development that's occurred since the master plan was originally proposed. It seems like Sterling Heights isn't abiding by what our plan for that node was supposed to be on their side. There's a lot of development there with the 7-Eleven, the bank, and it's really turning into a commercial corner. But on our side, in that northwest corner, there are houses right abutting up to this property, and that really does, I think, constrain it. And in that aspect, I think the neighborhood node is the right way to have that zone. And in that respect, you know, with that limited space and the limited distance and limited isolation buffer there is really between the restaurant and those residents right behind, I think that a drive-through probably isn't the best bet. A Tim Hortons restaurant, coffee shop, or what I think would be a great, I mean, it's a perfect property. And I really like the idea of bringing in all of those people from the hospital down the street and all the neighbors. So I think it would be a good development in that regard. But all in all, I support the project, but not that drive-through.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz, did you have any comments?
Yeah. I've heard everything the residents have talked about. I have a concern that whatever goes in on this property, we're probably going to hear the same concerns again. But this board, this commission, spent a great deal of time on the new master plan. And we looked at each and every one of the neighborhood nodes, because that was a major change from what we had in the prior master plan. We have no control over Sterling Heights. They are an independent municipality. They may do whatever they like. We said no drive-throughs on this property for a reason. And I have to agree with Mr. Sanzika. We've had meetings about this site before, and we just seem to keep coming back with the same thing, which is three pounds in a two-pound bag. I can't support the drive-through. I can't support the dumpsters being highly visible from the main thoroughfare. And I will not be recommending conditional rezoning on this property. Thank you.
Mr. Sanzika?
Let me say one other comment. You know, in general, I think Tim Hortons does an excellent job. Mark is a great planner, and I've seen a lot of his sites in the city. And I think he's trying to do the best for this, that's potentially for the site. But I don't think this site really fits the need for a Tim Hortons. It's just, it's an overuse of the site. And I guess that's, not that I have anything against Tim Hortons. I think it's a great establishment, and I think they do a great job. But this site in particular, just in my mind, doesn't fit the use of a Tim Hortons, and a 24/7 drive-through window.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Edmonds?
Well, I'm extremely conflicted on this issue. I think all the current Tim Hortons that we have in the city of Troy are well laid out. Many of them have very similar size sites. I really would like to hear from, directly from the owner of the property of what kind of negotiations have occurred between you and the neighboring property to the north.
My name is Sam Asker. I'm the owner of the property I purchased, I'm sorry. I purchased the property in seven years ago from the city of Troy. I paid dollars for this property. I put it for sale since that time with a condition not to be a gas station on this property, to actually save the neighborhood from putting a gas station with a big corporate walk-in to the city and with their power that they have, and they could put a gas station over there. We've seen just a gas station pop up, Kroger, down the road in a place nobody knows where it's come from. So the property owner, the neighborhood asking, and they're worried about putting any businesses over there. One day, if the property went back, or we lose the property, or anything else, somebody's going to come and do something on this property. I tried several things to put in this property. Everything come back again to negative. Actually, some of the neighbors mentioned Taco Bell. Taco Bell, one of the people, they asked me to put the Taco Bell over there. And I have approved. I have signed letters from them, okay? The rejection was no drive-through, the deal is off. It's just been no drive-through, deal off, no drive-through, deal off, no drive-through, deal off. It's just, it's not going to work. And then right away, again, McDonald's, deal off, one across the road. And I'll be honest with you, this Tim Hortons is going to exist, but it's not on this corner maybe, but it's going to be across the road. And there is an empty spot across the road, and there is a drive-through across the road, they're going to take it. And the city's just going to lose, keep going, back and forth. And the neighborhood asking for the safety, actually, if you guys look at it, and if everybody look at it, we are taking the top end and corner, okay? The subdivision is way far. If the councilman asks me to buy more, which is we can't, okay? To buy more from the property, and that's going to be feasible, in that case, we're going to build Tim Hortons more bigger, more into the two properties, and we're going to be much closer to the subdivision. And we're going to have more traffic to get into the subdivision and exit from the subdivision. Okay? So it's just, it's just not feasible. Actually, the way they design it to meet mostly most of the criteria. And even, I mean, if there is no support to the drive-through, I think, which is I'm sure knows, okay? And with the contract that I have with Tim Hortons, there will be no Tim Hortons. It's just basically it. And the property will stay empty for the last seven years. The price that I'm selling it, it's $120,000 less than the price that I paid to the city of Troy. If the city of Troy want to take it from me now, I'll hand it to them. The problem is, is just, and actually, before the city of Troy, that property's been empty for a long time. Okay? What's the safety all about keeping it empty? We are doing a Tim Hortons. Not even a McDonald's, not even a Burger King, a fresh food, a nice café, okay? With the stuff, I mean, I have kids. I have three kids. Okay? My younger one is six years old. Definitely, I'm worried about that. But the same thing, office building, yeah, the kid's going to go out to the office building. There's cars in and out. I mean, they're worrying about 24 hours, is the kid leaving 24 hours at 12:00 in the night, walking around? I mean, I don't think so. I mean, we're talking safety for the kids is on the regular time. So every business is there existing. I mean, there's a 7-Eleven. So what the difference? If they're going to go across the road, that's 7-Eleven attracting more kids than Tim Hortons. You have the Slurpee, you have every single thing to drag in the kids to go across the street. What did they came without even crossing the road? There is no crossing roads. There is no crossing nothing. It's on the neighborhood. It's, I don't see what other businesses, offices, well, across the road, there's empty spaces. It's been there for the last six years for lease sign. Nobody moved it, and nobody leased it. And I'm telling you, they leased it very cheap. I mean, and I think, I think the way, and by the way, the two entrances to the property is, that's not something I decide to do. The city of Troy, the city engineer of Troy, when they widening the road, they come up with it. If I'm not wrong, the city engineer in that time, the road commission was Mr. Robert or some, I'm not sure exactly the name, but I have it in my office. He's the one who, these two entrance, after I purchased it, they made it. So those two entrances is actually designed by the city after they did their own, their traffic engineering thing. So it was made to get in and out from the property. And I hope I cover most of the things. I'll be honest with you, I tried for a long time to put something on this property. The only thing that I have, and I think, in my opinion, I think as a café, it would be nice to put it over there. As far as noises, as far as other things, I mean, I am around, and I've been in this, in that area since 1993. The traffic coming from Dequnder is not that big over there. This is Sequer Lake. This is not 18 Mile. My location's in 18 Mile. It's way different. There is no traffic. And even the hospital is not a big traffic over there. We're not going to have, I mean, it's going to be a traffic, but it's going to be a minimum traffic. Okay? And that bus, exactly, I know where it's a stop because I'm in that neighborhood. Okay? It's, if we're going to purchase another property to make Tim Hortons or another businesses, okay? Which is somebody's going to come and do it. If it's not me, somebody big's going to come and do it, and he's going to do it. Because again, the master plan is decide that actually the two houses and this corner as a commercial, whatever it is. So one day, either that master plan's going to change, or that master plan's going to exist to put something over there. And actually, it's going to be worse to the neighborhood because they're going to be closer to the drive-through to the subdivision.
Mr. Asker, thank you.
I apologize for my.
Mr. Edmonds, did your question get answered?
Yes, thank you.
Could you just tell me again?
Yes.
What attempts have you made to purchase the property to the north? I mean, have you been rejected? Have you, just can't get to a negotiated price?
I mean, I cannot, we cannot purchase a property to the north. First of all, they're asking a lot of money for it. Second thing, we cannot, I'm not, we, it's not feasible for us to go purchase another land, and then again, go another rezoning on it because it's from residential to rezonate commercial, and then keep going on it. And I'll be honest with you, it's just impossible. It's just, there's no feasible for us, and there is no money for us to do that. And I don't think it's, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Kasab?
I actually tied up that property for six months and tried to do a joint development between the two parcels. The ideal use was a bank or a credit union. We had absolutely no takers. We explored, my partner is a commercial broker, knocked on many doors, tried to get someone to come to the table. Coincidentally, a bank on, in the Sterling Heights side, the old Warren Bank, closed down, and that broker solicited us to move the Tim Hortons project over there because it already approved for a drive-through. So if it doesn't end up in Troy, there's a good chance it could end up in Sterling Heights. Ideally, we'd like to have it here. But there's been a lot of effort, a lot of discussions with the owner to the north. There are two doctors that own it free and clear. The price is above market, in my opinion. Nonetheless, we were willing to pay it so long as we can do some sort of joint development, but the efforts were futile.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Carlisle, I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
No, for Mr. Carlisle. The deficiencies that you noted in your report, they were based on what zoning?
They were based on the commercial business zoning.
Okay, so even if this commission saw its way to prove the conditional rezoning, we still have all of these site issues to deal with.
You have, the main deficiency would be the tent stacking space. In regards to parking, there is leeway for the planning commission based on evidence supported by the applicant to the planning commission's satisfaction, that the parking provided is sufficient. So there is relief allowed from the planning commission to be granted on that. I don't see anywhere in the code, and the director can correct me if I'm wrong, where there is an allowance to reduce the number of stacking spaces. So that tent stacking space that protrudes into the drive-out is a sticking point that would have to get cleared up.
In addition to the other concerns that were raised in your report?
Yeah, a lot of, yes. A lot of the concerns were raised were in regards to traffic and circulation, which is not necessarily a standard in the ordinance, other than traffic and circulation conflict.
I think Mr. Krent, his health, safety, and welfare. I mean, it's kind of unwritten.
Relate to standards, but not dimensional standards per se.
All right.
Just a reminder that I heard the word approval a couple times. The planning commission in this instance is a recommending body.
Thank you, Director. Well, this is a tough one. We've heard a lot of conversation tonight. We've heard opinions from the commission. It's not that I don't value what the residents are saying, but I think some of the, some of the comments for the residents, they're part of, part of life, part of the world we live in. And whether it's a Tim Hortons or it's another development, I think we're going to still see some of those issues with us. But where I, where I do have a little bit of shortcoming with this is, and it has been said, the size of the property and trying to put the drive-through in there. And because we were putting the drive-through in there, it created some other difficulties and other concerns for safety. And I'm having a real problem, again, it's been said many different ways, but this site, I believe, is just too small for what we're trying to put in here. So. Yes, Mr. Stratt?
I'd like to ask staff, if we.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. We're talking about a technicality here. Go ahead.
No, I was just going to ask that if this were the recommending decision, if we recommend approval for this, will this come back to us for site plan approval, or this is what we have to approve? This is it?
Well, generally speaking, in the planning, for conditional rezoning applications, the planning commission makes a recommendation on the site plan, city council acts on the application, and that's preliminary site plan approval. This instance, as Mr. Carlisle indicated in the report, there's a, there's a traffic study that's kind of, that we're going to require. And one of the questions that we're going to, we're going to want to answer this evening is when the traffic study comes in. But generally speaking, the planning commission makes a recommendation on the preliminary site plan, which is part of the conditional rezoning, and you don't see it again, generally speaking.
So if we were to try to put a wall in or anything like that, we'd have to do it now, or it's not going to be it?
Well, let me answer it this way. A conditional rezoning application, any conditions that are placed on a development have to be volunteered by the applicant. So the planning commission cannot condition their recommendation on the applicant providing or, you know, or amending the site plan. It's got to be voluntarily offered.
For my clarification, what does this traffic study impact have to play on our recommendation? How does that come into play?
Well, my concern, and Ben, feel free to, feel free to jump in at any time, our concern is, is the traffic study could potentially make some recommendations onsite and/or offsite that could impact the layout of the property. And the public hearing is being held tonight, and what the public and what the planning commission is seeing is before them this evening. However, along comes a traffic study that says change this, this, this. Now, the site plan's being altered based on the traffic study, and the planning commission and the public and the staff have not, have, had not had an opportunity to review the revised site plan. So it's procedural thing. I completely understand the applicant's desire to not expend the, you know, the monies on the traffic impact study at this time. However, there is potentially an impact on the site design, both on the site and within the right of way.
Thank you. Mr. Kasab, did you have a comment?
We have no objection to putting a masonry wall for the record with regards to the property of the west. And as to the traffic study, obviously, we don't know what it's going to come back with. If it's something we can work with the engineering department, we would just comply with it. And if it doesn't alter the site, we won't need to come back. If it alters the site, then obviously we'd have to amend our petition and come back for an amendment to the approval.
Is that the process, Mr. Savadant, that if there was some recommendation tonight for approval, and a traffic study altered the site plan, what happens then?
Well, this is where I lean on Sue. The conditional rezoning agreement would have to be very clear on exactly what happens. That sounds, based on what Mr. Kasab offered, that sounds about right in terms of timing. Ben, what do you think? And Sue, what do you think?
Well, first of all, because this is conditional rezoning, you're going to be bound by whatever you approve tonight. The traffic report can come through as a request for engineering after the fact, but Mr. Savadant's absolutely correct, that if something changes significantly, you've already recommended to city council that it be done this way. They're going to have to approve an agreement that goes with the conditional rezoning that we don't have in place. It would have to reflect everything that's been adopted tonight and recommended and submitted to city council with all of those items itemized. So basically, that's your agreement. When city council approves your agreement, that's your agreement, and that's what you're bound by.
And the way to avoid that seems like what a very complex situation, is to get this traffic study before we make a recommendation?
It would be better to get all your ducks in order so you clearly know what you're recommending to city council, because this is going to have to go into a written agreement, because that's what conditional rezoning is. And everything in that agreement would be set out. It's no different than any other, well, we don't like to call it contractual zoning, but that's basically what it's going to be. It's going to be a contract that you're agreeing to rezone this way. So if there are loose ends, then you're recommending to council to approve as is, based upon what you've submitted. It's going to leave them with an incomplete agreement or an agreement they will have to change and either send back to you, because they're not the planning commission and they want your opinion. So it could result in a lot of trips up and back, and a lot of unanswered questions.
Thank you. One second. Mr. Carlisle, did you have anything to add to this discussion?
Completely agree with everything that was said.
Very well said. Who was asking? Was it Mr. Schultz?
I have a question for the petitioner. You've heard the opinions so far tonight. You've also heard this most recent discussion. Would you prefer to have an up or down vote on a reconditioned or conditional zoning recommendation to city council tonight? Or would you like this postponed so that you can put together the entire package and give it one more try?
You know, believe me, there's something more that I think we could do, because we've been at this for almost three years. I think we would have done it. I don't know what the traffic study's going to come back with, but it's a fairly expensive process, and we've incurred significant costs just to get this far. If the drive-through's not going to change, obviously, it's going to be there in all events. If that's the element that deters this project from happening, then the traffic study's not going to change that.
You need five votes for a recommendation. You've heard, and you only have eight members of a nine-member board. You've heard everyone's opinion up here, so.
Well, I think we can look at the table and get perhaps for 30 days, and we can look into the traffic study issue further, explore potential modifications potentially to the dumpster, and see if there's any better alternatives that addresses some of the concerns that Mr. Strattan may, some of the others may have raised. But the general configuration's probably not going to change in terms of how the drive-through gets laid out. The only way to put the building up front is to lay out a drive-through in this fashion, and you're probably never going to see another Tim Hortons in the state of Michigan laid out this way. It's a very unique design, actually. Went to a lot of. Went to a lot of effort to get it to look like that and to function, hopefully, for the site, so. But we can perhaps look into tabling it for 30 days and try to address some of these concerns so that you're not put in a limbo state in terms of what you're approving or recommending approval for.
Mr. Sanzika, did you have a comment?
My question was answered. We need five votes to approve this.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Schultz?
I would move to postpone for 30 days, not to exceed 30 days.
One second.
All right. Mr. Krent?
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shupke?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Strat?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you to all the residents that came out.
Can we take 10 minutes?
Sure. We're going to take a 10-minute recess. All right, screaming along here. We're on item number six. This is a special use request and preliminary site plan review. Public hearing, special use request and preliminary site plan review, file number SU398. Proposed Fifth Third Bank, north side of Big Beaver, between Lakeview and Alpine. It's 2282 West Big Beaver. Section 20, currently zoned BB, Big Beaver District. Who is going to? Mr. Carlisle.
Thank you. Another drive-through for the planning commission to consider. The applicant, it's Fifth Third Bank, this is their existing site on Big Beaver. The applicant proposes to demolish their existing building and redevelop the site with the drive-through at this location. If the planning commission will remember, approximately six months ago, the planning commission forwarded a recommendation to the city council, which the city council ultimately granted, to allow drive-throughs as special use for financial institutions on Big Beaver. Based on that recommendation, the applicant submitted a site plan that concurs with that. And we just want to note in regards to the building, that the building does comply with all the Big Beaver Form-Based districts. The primary customer parking will be located at the side and rear of the building. The primary employee parking will be located in a parking lot that's adjacent to the drive-out location. The drive-out complies with, the drive, I'm sorry, the drive-through is detached from the building and complies with the design requirements that are listed in the Form-Based Drive-Thru Regulations. As for the building itself, it does comply with all the design regulations of the Big Beaver Form-Based district. It has an entry that fronts on Big Beaver, and the applicant has to provide the necessary transparency and ground story activation that is required in the ordinance. Access to the site will remain off the existing curb cut, which is, again, one off of Big Beaver. And the applicant has to provide the necessary parking, number of parking spaces, as well as bicycle parking is provided. In addition, the applicant has submitted the required landscaping and the submitted photometrics do meet the code as required. In regards to the special use standards, these are reviewed under section 9.02D. The applicant does meet all these required standards, and we do find that they do meet these findings. In addition, there are specific standards in regards to the Big Beaver Drive-Thru Standards, which the planning commission did recommend approval for, and the city council ended up passing. In addition, the applicant does meet all those required standards as well. So in summary, we do support the project and find that it does meet all of the Form-Based as well as building requirements in the Big Beaver District, and we recommend with no conditions as plans as first submitted.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for Mr. Carlisle? Mr. Krent?
I realize this is site plan, but review. My question is, do we have any authority over sign placement, or is that not part of our job?
That sign placement is not within the purview of the planning commission. It's separate.
My second question, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
But we know our purview is the health, safety, and welfare of the general public, correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Carlisle? Yes, Mr. Saab.
This is not a question, this is a, can I piggyback and kind of?
Yes.
Where Mr. Krent is coming from is he visited the site, and the existing sign that's at the entry drive right now, he took some photographs of the sign. It's in a, it's in kind of a, it's in a location, it's a certain size, and there's a sign that right now that says, you know, that we've moved and gives a location. And the sign complies with our sign ordinance. However, it could potentially create, you know, as designed, could, it's in a spot where it's basically a foot from the right-of-way, and when there's cars exiting, there could be some potential conflicts with pedestrians. So I think Mr. Krent has made the comment to kind of make the planning commission, staff, and the petitioner aware of potential conflicts with the sign, the existing sign that's on the site, and not within the purview of the planning commission. However, the applicant here, the representative of Atwell's here, a representative of Fifth Third Bank's here, they're listening, and your point is very well taken.
Thank you. Anything else for Mr. Carlisle? Petitioner here.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Jeff Wagner, Vice President for Development for Fifth Third Bank. And I'm also joined by Doug Atwell of Atwell, who's our civil engineer of record with the project. It's with great pleasure that we bring this project to you for your consideration tonight. We first approached the planning department probably about, I would say, a little bit less than a year ago, to first introduce our plans for redeveloping what has become kind of an embarrassment of a facility for us, and it's been on our radar for a few years, and we've had to sort through corporate funding priorities. But those stars and moon aligned a few years ago, and so we had the funding secured internally to begin the project in earnest. It's at that time that we became aware of the newer zoning standards, the Big Beaver corridor, study-driven Form-Based zoning. So we got quick education on what that would involve, and, you know, we're prepared to meet both the spirit as well as the technical requirements of that ordinance. As it's been summarized by Mr. Carlisle and Mr. Saab, the one issue that was raised for discussion at the time was the need for the bank to be able to have a drive-through facility as a part of this redevelopment, both from a competitive standpoint in terms of other institutions that we compete with in the corridor already having those facilities, as well as expectations of our customers. So we worked through the process, and we're gratified to have successfully seen the ordinance amended in this particular area. So we took to heart the intent of the ordinance, and basically set about to work with staff and the consultants to bring a project to you that virtually complies with 100% of all the standards, both of the standards for the required, for the special use, as well as for the site plan. And it's been a lot of good effort on behalf of our consultants and staff and the city's consultants, but we think we've really brought to you forward a project that hopefully has very few questions attached to it. We're excited about the prospect of moving this forward as quickly as the remainder of the entitlement process will allow. In terms of the question on the sign, if I can kind of just jump to that, the existing sign is going to be replaced. I don't know if our drawing package that's submitted has that in it or not. So I can, even though it's not something that you folks will be reviewing tonight, we're simply taking advantage of that existing pylon to basically redirect our customers. We've moved them temporarily to a facility down the street, but as that site gets redeveloped, we're coming back with an entirely new sign. And in fact, if you know where our current, our temporary facility is, there is a monument sign in front of that facility right now, and it's basically that sign that's going to move down there to the new facility. So I think if you see that the next time you go by there, that'll give you some comfort as to what the new sign configuration's going to look like. And other than that, between myself on the business side and Doug from the technical side, we're here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the petitioner?
I just wanted to state, sometimes when we get applications, the applicant comes in, they know it's 30 days. They have to get it in at least 30 days before, so they get it in exactly 30 days before. This application, they got it in before that, gave us a little bit more time, and we were able to provide a list of some issues, as it were, and they were able to make revisions and come to us with a completely clean application. And I commend them for working with us and making everyone's job easier.
Wonderful. Thank you for that.
Mr. Chip?
Yes, Mr. Krent?
I have one question for the petitioner. Again, regarding the sign, I realize, you know, we've already had the discussion, but my real concern is, even, I've seen the new sign, and I've seen the one-foot setback, and I know it's further away from the driveway than the existing one. The existing one's virtually right onto the, right up to the driveway. I just want to make sure that there's enough line of sight so that, I'll tell you, legs in your bank, I've done that for quite a while, because I've been at your bank, it's scary. It really is scary, because I don't know who, I can't see, no one can see who's coming. And I would just hope that the placement of this one allows at least enough time for a kid on a bike going maybe 10 miles an hour to be able to pull out and see if there's an oncoming child. That's all, you know, that's all I can ask.
Sure, absolutely. No, we understand.
No, we understand. We, you know, we're, I think unlike a lot of other, you know, users of real estate, commercial users of real estate, the one thing that banks bring to the table is we're there for 20, 30 years or more, you know, we're not a restaurant that comes and goes, even though I know that cities love restaurants. So, you know, our developments need to be really sustainable, and so we will take that, you know, that comment very seriously and look at that and make sure that we're, we're not creating an issue that's, that's going to be a problem.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Edmonds?
I'm ready to.
Oh, no, this is a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Oh, okay, sorry.
If you have a seat, we'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back. And Mr. Schultz?
Resolve that special use approval and preliminary site plan approval for the proposed Fifth Third Bank located on the north side of Big Beaver between Lakeview and Alpine, 2282 West Big Beaver Road, Section 20, currently zoned BB, Big Beaver District, be granted.
Second by Mr. Shepke?
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
I had a comment I wanted to make, and I didn't realize it was going so fast. I guess yes, I'll make a comment afterwards.
Mr. Tagel?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Thank you, you're approved, and by just looking at the package that you submitted, I didn't see any, anything lacking as far as information, so I appreciate your diligence and your thermos. Mr. Stratt, did you have a comment to the petitioner, or just a general comment?
Well, a comment to both. My concern is that I see that there is stacking lane, there's two, two cars for each lane. Is that not correct? And my experience in going with, sometimes one of the, the, the drive-up is closed. So you have an option, and typically there's a stacking area that you wait prior to in making a decision as to which one you're going to go into, rather than having it all made at that point in time. That was my only comment I was going to make.
If I can clarify, there's, there's four, four-car stacking in each of the two lanes.
Four cars?
Yes.
Yes. And four cars is the minimum behind the actual car that's being serviced?
No, including the car that's serviced, because that's the way the ordinance calculates it. And then there's also a bypass lane that allows you, that allows you to go around.
Bypass lane.
Yeah.
I think the drawing you're seeing?
Perfect.
The PDF that I, that he had shown earlier isn't very clear. I apologize for that. But.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
Four.
Yeah. My only comment is that you don't know which one is going to be open. There may be one open, and there may be two that will open. How do you get around to the other one? Never mind, never mind, I don't want to get.
All right. It's true, there'd be lights on one side.
It's fine. It's fine, thank you. You answer my question.
All right, item number seven, zoning ordinance text amendment. Public hearing, zoning ordinance text amendment, file number ZODA 244, miscellaneous zoning ordinance revisions. Mr. Carlisle, is this you?
Yes, this is a public hearing for the proposed zoning text amendments that have been considered by the planning commission, I believe at least three previous times. In total, in your packet, there were 33 text amendments. If the planning commission will remember, when we first presented it, there were what we consider 12 substantive and 14 minor changes. The 33, the difference is only because some of those substance were broken out because they involved multiple sections of the ordinance. So in total, it's 33, but in actuality, it's the same exact language, same exact text amendments that were proposed at the last planning commission consideration. We have not made any changes to those language. It is exactly the same, and so we're open for any questions that might be around. And then again, we are looking for a recommendation to the city council.
Any questions for Mr. Carlisle? Mr. Edmonds?
Well, unfortunately, I'm an editor, and I can't make changes on the PDF, so I noticed one that stood out right away, the word "ensure" is spelled with an E, not an I.
Good.
That's different.
We can, we can make.
You can do a global on that.
We can do minor editorial changes, things like that. That's fine, we'll, we'll clear that up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? This is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone out there that would like to speak to this item? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to the table. Is there anyone that would like to have any other points of discussion? All right, can I have a motion? Mr. Schultz?
Resolve that the planning commission hereby recommends the city council that Articles 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 10, 12, 13, and 16 of Chapter 39 of the Code of the City of Troy, which includes miscellaneous zoning revisions, be amended as printed in the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment.
Support.
Support by Mr. Edmonds? Kathy?
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagel?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
All right, item number eight, site condominium development. Preliminary site plan review, the proposed Beechwood Estates Site Condominium, eight units slash lots, west side of Beach Road, 1,000 foot south of Long Lake, Section 18, currently zoned R1A, one-family residential district. Mr. Carlisle?
Yes, thank you. This is another item the planning commission should be well-versed in. I believe this is either the third or fourth time that this application has come back to the planning commission. The applicant is resubmitting an eight-unit site condominium project that the planning commission remembers. They originally submitted this eight-unit in June. The planning commission had asked them to go back and consider the cluster option. The applicant did come back with a cluster option that included 10 units. There was some discrepancy in regards to the amount of open space. The planning commission then asked them to provide more open space. They're coming back now with the eight units, eight-unit conventional layout with not the clusters, not the cluster division as presented earlier.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
They did go to zoning board of appeals for consideration of variance. They're postponed at the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you.
Thank you. The only significant change from the plan that was originally reviewed in June, that the planning, that the planning commission saw, was that the applicant has changed some of the grain on the southern end, specifically at the request of the planning commission, and specifically to save one of a significant tree, so we compliment the applicant on doing that. We have only a few small, minor site planning issues, and most of these are actually due to engineering, but I'll just kind of quickly summarize them. The first is the building footprint for Lot 5 encroaches into the rear yard setback. The applicant will have to reduce that encroachment. The applicant did not provide the maximum lot area coverage. I don't think they exceed that, but we just want that calculation shown on the site plan to confirm that. The applicant should show access, show an access drive to the stormwater retention on the, on the corner of the site. And the applicant should either provide a five-foot sidewalk on Beach Road and/or get relief from the traffic committee from providing that sidewalk itself. So as such, while we are, I will admit, we are a little bit, we are disappointed that the 10 lot cluster did not come through. They do comply with all requirements of the eight lots site condominium project. So with that, we do recommend approval, provided that these issues that I had noted were addressed as part of the final site plan.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Carlisle? Mr. Edmonds?
Can we have a little more clarification why it was postponed at the ZDA?
You're making me think at 9:23 at night, Mr. Edmonds. What before the, there was some, there was some question as to, let me think now. I believe they were seeking a, go ahead, help me out, Ben.
The zoning board of appeals was asked to consider, it was more of a technical matter. The technical matter was, the zoning board of appeals had to consider if the grant, allowing the planning commission to even consider the relief of open space deficiency. So it really was a technical matter. They were, if the zoning board of appeals did not allow the planning commission to grant relief, the applicant would have to provide the open space requirement. So it was very, it was a very technical matter that the planning, that the zoning board of appeals just asked for more information from the applicant.
There was also some discussion as to how the, the density bonus is calculated, and whether it was appropriate for the applicant to seek 10 units or nine units. So it was kind of, it kind of, and Mr. Maniachi was there, he can, he can fill us in as well, but it kind of progressed into somewhat of a confusing type of a meeting. It was just one of those meetings where, you know, where maybe there was more questions answered than, or questions asked than questions answered, that type of, that type of a meeting. Because as Mr. Carlisle indicated, it was kind of a unique application, and a tricky application. I made the comment at the meeting that I've had to pinch-hit for two zoning board of appeals meetings, and they're, you know, the two most complicated issues that we've had in 10 years, so they're definitely a unique and a complicated issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Savant.
May I add a little to that? Actually, the outlot that they were using was way out to the left or the upper right corner, and it was felt that a part of the open area, that was not actually accessible to the entire area, so therefore, whether or not that was really what the intent was of the zoning ordinance or the benefit, and it was for the benefit of everybody, not just isolating it and making it that, so that's the reason for that.
Yeah, great, great recollection there. There was a considerable amount of discussion on that issue.
Considerable, right, if I recall correctly.
Great, thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Carlisle? All right, petitioner here.
Joe Maniachi from Mondrian Properties.
Any questions?
I think I've been up here many times on this property, and I think almost all has been said, so.
All right, any questions for the petitioner?
The only comment I'd like to make is, if I may?
You may.
I have a little concern with the requirement that a sidewalk be put in on Beach Road on that side. I think there's a sidewalk on one side of Beach Road, and it was intended to be a scenic road, and it seems like we're destroying that scenic appearance constantly, repaving, putting in sard stripes and all kinds of highway things on that road. I travel it, and I really think that was one thing we were trying to do, is keep it as that. I don't know if you're going to, you have to go before, I guess we have to have that in as part of our zoning ordinance, right?
Or the applicant can seek a waiver.
We will be seeking a waiver for the, from the traffic committee.
I hope you do. I hope you're successful.
So do I.
My experience is the traffic committee has rarely seen a sidewalk waiver that they didn't like, so you'll probably get what you're asking for.
Oh, great.
Just a quick comment. On the south side, the south border, I know you regraded, you're not going to have the stone wall, correct?
Correct.
And that, I guess it was an oak tree, if I'm not mistaken, that's going to be saved, the large one?
That's our intent, yes.
Very nice, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
I think he's going through quite a bit.
Thank you.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes, and I applaud him for the, his patience and working through these extremely difficult issues and a lot of the residents' comments. I, I think it's a missed opportunity. I'm really sorry that the BCA was not able to resolve that to the satisfaction, because we always say we're really promoting the cluster option, and, which could have had a benefit to both him as well as us. But thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Oh, I have one comment. At number five, are you going to be going for a variance on that?
No, we'll get a floor plan to custom for the size of the lot.
Oh, okay, okay.
We'll reside, we will redo the house.
Okay.
Mr. Edmonds?
I'm ready to offer a resolution.
Well, I'm going to give anyone in the audience an opportunity.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to us, although this is not a public hearing? All right, Mr. Edmonds?
Thank you. Resolve that preliminary site condominium approval pursuant to Article 8 and Section 10.02 of the zoning ordinance, as requested for Beechview Estates Site Condominium, eight units or lots, west side of Beach Road, south of Long Lake, Section 18, within the R1A, one-family residential district, be granted, subject to the following. Number one, submit a revised preliminary site plan that includes the following revisions. A, reconfigured Unit 5 building footprint. B, identify proposed lot coverage. C, show that the required 25-foot by 25-foot corner clearance on both sides of the new intersection of Beechview Court and Beach Road. And D, show access drive to the detention basin. Number two, provide a five-foot sidewalk along Beach Road or seek a waiver from the traffic committee. And three, obtain all appropriate wetland permits, MDEQ Oakland County, SARL Erosion Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner, City of Troy, and any other appropriate body prior to final site plan approval.
Second. All right, Mr. Schultz, second.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagel?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
You're over the goal line.
That's going to be a beautiful place.
All right, item number nine, election of officers for 2013, and I would ask Ms. Lancaster to give us a little bit of a primer as to the proper procedures for going forward with this.
Basically, Mr. Chair, you're going to take nominations for either, for both the chair and the vice chair for the offices. Somebody can propose a slate for those two positions, or you can take them individually. I don't know if you want, if there's one person that's nominated and no other persons are nominated, you don't need a roll-call vote. However, if there are two, you will need a roll-call vote, and each of you will have to decide, state a name of who you're voting for. Majority wins. Likewise, for the second position, if there's no slate. And then you have to make a recommendation to council for an alternate to the zoning board of appeals. There's been some discussion as to whether or not that has to be Mr. Stratt because of the city council decision. I've been, while you've all been hearing from the citizens tonight, I've been reviewing the books. I can't find anything that says that there's anything in there that city council has to appoint the same member. So I would tell you to go ahead and use your judgment tonight about who you want to appoint as an alter member, and I will do some further research. If we have to rescind that later, we will. I can't find anything that would, I did find something, Mr., Mr., regarding a zoning commission, and I don't know, that's different than a planning commission, so I don't know if that's, so I'll do a little bit more research, but so far, I don't see anything that would prevent that from happening, that you could name someone else besides Mr. Stratt. So, not that you might want to not, don't get me wrong, name Mr. Stratt, but I don't think he has to serve until he retires from the planning commission.
That's a fine idea, but that's just my opinion.
And I don't know if I've accurately summarized all that to your satisfaction, but it's a pretty simple procedure, and I think you can handle it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for setting that bar. Yes, Mr. Schultz?
I have a question for Ms. Lancaster. You said we can, we can propose a slate for chair, vice chair, and then BCA is separate, or can we do it all as one slate?
You could probably do it all as one slate, but the difference being is that you can only nominate that member to the BCA.
So it would be easier to do it as two steps.
Yeah, better be do it as two, so you don't have to send the whole motion up to city council.
All right, Mr. Schultz again.
May I propose a slate for our chair and vice chair?
You may.
I would propose that Mr. Tagel be chairman for the 2013 season, and that Mr. Edmonds be vice chair. I'll support that.
I don't know if you need support, is it just any other nominations, I guess, is the question?
Yes, you have to ask that, if there are any other nominations you've got. And you have to decide if you have, everybody's had enough time to make their nominations.
Well, let's see, we'll sit here for, let's make sure. We're in no hurry to leave, are we?
You're starting the job.
All right, well, I would, Mr. Edmonds?
I just have one comment I'd like to make. I know your term was somewhat shortened this year because of Mr. Maxwell's leaving the commission, so I think it's only appropriate that you serve again. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
I'd like to make a comment, too.
Yes, Mr. Schultz.
Based on that, along that line, that's exactly the way that I felt, but I do feel that every, every commissioner should have an opportunity of being chair. that every, every commissioner should have an opportunity of being chair, and I think it's only fair that we try to rotate as often as we can for that, but under the condition that you are not full, the full year, I think that it's appropriate that you be a full year. That's my opinion, anyway, that's the reason why I'd be voting for it.
Thank you.
You also have to officially close nominations.
Are there any other nominations before we close the nominations officially? Officially, they're closed. All right, so, can I have a nomination for the ZBA representative? Mr. Schultz.
I would nominate Mr. Crin to be the, the representative for 2013.
All right, is there any other nominations? Well, I think we've all had a adequate time to think about that, so we'll close the nominations, and I guess we're done.
You have to do, actually, you're, you're close, now you just do a roll call vote on all the motions.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Stratt.
Yes.
Mr. Tagel.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Kempin.
Yes.
Mr. Crin.
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Shepke.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
All right, item 10, public comments, no one in the audience. Item 11, we'll close with planning commission comments, and we'll start with Kathy, do you have anything tonight?
I do not, thank you.
Mr. Carlisle? Get a lot of talking tonight, good, good job, good job. Mr. Zanzika.
Just something really quick, I, I don't know if anyone had a chance to read the news lately, but I was recently appointed as the chief deputy terrain commissioner for Oakland County.
Congratulations.
And the world's shortest.
Retirement.
Retirement, and I did make a note to all the people that gave me gifts for my retirement that I wasn't going to return them. Don't, don't, but I'm, I'm very honored to have been selected to be chosen as a chief deputy, and Mr. Nash was a, it was an, I really was surprised when Mr. McCullough wasn't elected to the water resources commissioner at the last election, and I've really got to know Mr. Nash recently, and I interviewed, I had nine people on the interview board, and I was selected, but I was really honored to be selected, so.
Congratulations.
Out of retirement, back to work again.
Well, I've known Phil for many, many years, and that's well-deserved, so congratulations. Mr. Edmonds.
Congratulations to Phil, and just two quick things. I know at our meeting, the overview, the legal briefing, that we, I thought we decided that we were going to sign the code of ethics at our annual during the election of the officers, and I talked to, I sent an email to Brent, who is checking on that, and I think it will be occurring in a subsequent meeting, if I'm not correct.
Yeah, Sue and I, Sue's got trial this week, and starting next week, we'll get together and we'll put together some language, and we'll, we'll move forward on that as quickly as we can.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Mr. Shepke.
Nothing.
Mr. Schultz.
I would still like to see sidewalk waivers brought into the purview of the planning commission.
What?
That, that's ongoing, we've been, we've, we've met at least twice on that, and it's, I, I really don't want to get in, I'm not going to get into it tonight, even if you demand, Mr. Chairman, but, but it's, it's, the quickest, the easiest way to describe it is like an onion, and, and you think it's real simple, but then you start to delve in a little bit and you peel another layer off, and, and we're, we're continuing to address this, and we'll, I, I will, at a future meeting, I'll, I'll give you a lot more detailed response to the, to that question.
Thank you. Mr. Stratt, any comments? No? Mr. Kempin?
Yeah, I was hoping for a zoning map for Christmas, but you didn't, didn't come.
Well, you've been a, you've been a good boy this year, Ed, so, so, look, look in your stocking soon, you'll have one.
Excellent, excellent.
Mr. Crin.
The only thing I want to mention was that I'd like to see sometime in the future us to do a comprehensive review of the sign ordinance. Anyway, that's it. Let me tag on with that. We do have a partial sign ordinance percolating somewhere in the city manager's office, and it'd be nice to see some movement on that.
I just want to add a question, I noticed the new Doran Mayhew signs on three sides of their building, I think they're three sides, it's huge, did they come in and get proper paperwork for that?
Yeah.
Are they, are they, the wall signs, large wall signs?
Yeah.
Yeah, they would have probably, I can check, they would have received a waiver from the, from the building code board of appeals, I, I think, but I can check on that.
I was just curious, and they're barely, they're predominant. Your turn, Mr. Savin.